Let me start here in a couple of minutes. Let's get this ball rolling. I'd like to call the meeting order. Today is May 8, 1925. Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. Do we have any special intentions? What did I say? No way. I'm only 100 years.
You really did say 1925.
I'm 100 years off. Councilman Wilmot.
I'd just like to say, we had something extraordinary happen today and may God bless our new Pope Leo XIV. Please keep him in your prayers. Thank you.
Anyone else? Pledge? Okay. Does everyone stand please? Councilman McKenney?
Yes, thank you Council President. If everyone can bow their head or do whatever you choose to do. God, we ask you to fill our city, state, and national government leaders with wisdom, understanding, discernment, and knowledge. Grant us favor, increase our faith, and prepare us to pursue your excellence. Draw us to you and cause us to know and fulfill your promises and purposes. On this day, please give us direction, fortitude, and grace to deal with anything that may lay ahead. Amen.
Thank you ma'am. Councilman Brennan, would please listen to the pledge.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Yes sir, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll be brief. Just wanted to let everyone know that the proposed 2025-2026 city budget is on the city's website. And budget hearings will begin in this room at Heritage Hall, Monday, May 12th at 9:00 a.m. So, that's next Monday, 9:00 a.m. here. Traditionally, police go first and mayor goes last, so that's kind of, and everybody else in between, so that's the schedule of what's happening. Music in the park tomorrow, 6:30 to 9:30. Wayne James and the Partners. Movies in the park Saturday, 8:00 p.m. Moana 2. I'm old because I've never heard of that before. And, just to let everyone know, after the next council meeting, the Rivertown or South Kenner Splash Park will open. Probably around 1:00, so right after the meeting, we're going to head down to the Splash Park to open it up. I've said at a couple of meetings, the Roosevelt Boulevard between West Metairie and West Napoleon, bidding will, I think is still scheduled to take place next Wednesday, May 14th. And Williams Boulevard from West Metairie to Airline Drive is ahead of schedule for an overlay and it should be done weeks or months.
Four to five months.
Four to five months, we'll have. So, it's ahead of schedule, so Williams Boulevard will be overlaid all the way from, I guess, I-10 to Airline Highway. So, we'll have all new roadways, and that's it.
Thank you sir.
Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have Item 1, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of April 25th, 2025. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, I have Item 8, public hearings and final passage. Item 8A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,798. An ordinance authorized on a public hearing and amendments to the fiscal year 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024, annual action plans of the Home Investment Partnership Program and Home American Rescue Plan for the Community Development Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to open your public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. We're now in a public hearing. If there's anyone in the public wishing to address the council, please come forward now.
Ms. Shaw?
Good evening, council. The matter before you today on the agenda is, every year, we come before you for our annual action plan. So, with that plan is our CDVG and our home funding. And every year, we allocate an amount to home funds for affordable housing projects. In 2021, we were rehabilitating our Annie Washington Transitional Housing Center. We had spent about $300,000 and that building was unfortunately unable to be salvaged after Hurricane Ida. So, what we have done is, we've received about $800,000 from Jefferson Parish for our home ARP funding. And, we're going to use that with our annual allocations for the rehabilitation of that building. The home ARP funds are required to be used for shelter housing or housing that's available. What we did learn from COVID is, you can't put people in housing together anymore. So, we're looking to do something that's along the lines of SRO, single-room occupancy, it's just like an extended stay, where there'll be a kitchenette, a studio apartment, would it look like? So, that's what we're doing. I know Ms. Windsor is not here tonight. I know she will be excited. She's been asking about this building, that's named after her mother. So, we're going to be rehabilitating the Annie Washington with the home funds. Any questions? Thank you.
Seeing none, I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to close your public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to approve. Any questions before approval? Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 8B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,799. An ordinance authorized on a public hearing and approving the proposed fiscal year 2025 annual action plan of the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program grant for the Community Development Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat, for a two-meeting deferral. Any discussion? Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. I have none. Item 10 is opening of bids, I have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage, we have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 13,811. An ordinance to amend Section 15-23 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kenner entitled "Specific Traffic Control Signs" by adding there to "Truck Prohibited Signs on Delaware Avenue Between 20th Street and 21st Street." I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Branigan.
Yes, on the no-truck sign, for some apparent reason, our forefathers have left out this one block in a neighborhood that was not designated a no-truck sign, no-truck route. So, we're just adding this to the list of all of the other streets that are in the neighborhood. That's all.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution selecting the New Orleans Advocate as the official journal for the City of Kenner for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Seeing no discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,748. An ordinance approving the use of estate contract for the purchase of bleachers at Musburger Lino Stadium. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. And also, I have a request for an amendment. We will be amending Section 1 to add the state contract number 4400032406. In Section 2, we will add the contractor's name of Han Enterprises Incorporated with the state contract number as read above. And in the amount, it will be $250,000. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, council members in favor for the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Back to your original motion as amended. Councilman Branigan.
Yes, I just want to thank Jefferson Parish Councilwoman Rita Bohannon. She has put the funds together for us to be able to increase the visitor seating from about maybe 50 seats that can actually see the field to almost 1,000. I think it's 947. And, the recreation director, Charles Alon, and Ms. Natalie Newton made sure that the concrete's already there and poured so that when they put these new bleachers in, hopefully it will help us attract more and bigger schools to be able to use that facility. Also, the bleachers that are there, on that sideline, basically, they're regular bleachers. We're going to use those bleachers around the end zone, and also, we're going to move some to the baseball domes in the back, behind the gym, so that we have adequate seating for all of the people that are attending the events at Bertolino Playground. So, just want to thank Councilwoman Bohannon, Mr. Alon, and Ms. Newton for getting this stuff done. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,800. An ordinance authorized on the purchase of three new laser shows for the planetarium, including shipping and handling, at a cost of $6,075 from J. Heck Doing Business as Heck Industries, a sole-source provider for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Seeing no discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,801. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Legacy Restoration and Referral LLC to remove, furnish, and install windows and related at Heritage Hall in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6883 in an amount not to exceed $81,000 for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Seeing no discussion, council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,802. An ordinance approving an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, State Project Number H period 016392, Federal Aid Project Number H 016392, regarding vintage drive westbound resurfacing improvements from Duncan Canal to Powell Boulevard, City of Kenner project. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Mayor Glazer?
Yes, thank you. This is the companion project to the eastbound vintage from Duncan Canal to Power. When we originally sought the funds, federal funds for it, didn't have enough to do both sides. And I'd like to publicly thank Jose and his assistant Kimberly for not giving up on it and with their efforts, they were able to secure funding for the westbound. So, the eastbound is, the design is underway, it should be finished. And the westbound, if y'all approve it tonight, design will start in two to three months. So, it doesn't mean we get a new roadway right away, it's just that the process started. But with that, you know, Jose's tireless effort of running people down and getting money, we have, the westbound's going to be just as nice as eastbound, and that's it.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just, if you will, Mr. Gonzalez, if you will, just go through the money for this one, this project.
The federal funds that we are dedicating for the project relate to construction costs. Construction costs for that project, probably were being enabled of $2 million. The city is going to be receiving 80% of $2 million dollars for construction-related activities. Now, the design of the project is going to be based on 100% local money, okay, which the city has to come up with. But it's worth while, okay, because we are going to get 80% of the construction cost.
And that's, to the city, how much does that mean, cost-wise?
Cost-wise, it would be 20% of $2 million dollars. We have negotiated a fee yet for the design services. We have not yet selected a consultant, but we are in the process of selecting a consultant. So, I can't tell you exactly, but it probably will be in the neighborhood of $100,000. Then we're going to have to, you know, pick up with the local money. So, let's say $100,000, 20% of $2 million dollars. Add that, and then what we're given is a 80% of $2 million dollars.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in.
Just want to thank y'all for the work on it. Westbound Vintage seriously needed some work for a long time. We get a bunch of calls on resurfacing and striping that area. So, thank y'all, the administration, for getting the funds for this, especially you, Jose. Thank you so much.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,803. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from HNO Investments LLC to provide grass cutting of rough-cut ditch slopes in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6878 in an amount not to exceed $155,000 annually for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,804. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from New Light Electrical Wholesalers to supply streetlight poles and accessories on an as-needed basis in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6881 in an amount not to exceed $300,000 annually for the Public Works Department. Mr. Nugent, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is.
I'm sorry. Motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Go ahead now. I'm sorry.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Nugent. I live at 5444 Erlanger Road in District 3. This contract, for anyone not familiar, will provide for the majority of Kenner's outdoor light fixtures, poles, and associated electrical equipment until the summer of 2027. The bid packet associated with the contract was riddled with issues when I first brought it to the council's attention two years ago. Here's a brief recap. I didn't oppose approval the last time because I didn't see a reason to penalize the winning bidder for the city's lack of diligence and because I was told that we had some wiggle room when it came to modifying specs or sourcing additional products. As you already know, that last part turned out not to be true. Nonetheless, I did end up meeting with Councilwoman McKenney around that time, and she kindly helped facilitate my first meeting with the city. The intent being to use my research and professional expertise to help the city in an area where it was clearly struggling. Again, that was two years ago. You would think that two years would be ample time to properly revise the bid packet and to finally give the matter of municipal lighting the attention it deserves. However, the revised document you're all voting to approve today still has many issues and leaves many questions unanswered. While my three minutes here at the podium doesn't afford me the time to go into detail, I sent several members of this council copies of my most recent analysis yesterday. And I'm happy to make my findings available to any other council members or concerned citizens who might be interested. As this is a very busy time in the budget approval process, my hope is that the council will consider a short deferral on this item in order to allow the city time to respond to the concerns that I've raised and to provide answers to some of these lingering questions. And isn't it worth waiting? Councilman Lahat? The current iteration of the bid packet doesn't include any barnyard-style LED replacements, possibly one of the best and most economical options for retrofitting Driftwood. Shouldn't we know what our options will be once the contract is approved? Councilman Branigan? This version of the bid packet leaves the matter of mismatch retrofits and replacements in Chateau unresolved. Shouldn't we find out if we'll be locked into this situation for another two years? And Councilwoman McKenney? Two years after we sat down for that meeting, don't you want to know why we're still struggling to get this stuff right? Once again, my intention is not to penalize the bidder, and that's one of the many reasons I'm requesting deferred approval and not rejection of the contract. I just think we deserve to have some of these questions answered before we get ourselves stuck once again. As always, I thank you for your time, and I am more than happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ryan.
Councilman Branigan?
Oh, yes. Basically, on this contract, Amy Vallow and I had met about cost of fixtures, and they were straightened out in this new contract for the Chateau Estates area. And some bulb replacements came in, you know, where we thought they should be. If there are other issues, then that's going to have to be taken up in the future. But the deferral on this for one meeting or two meetings is not going to change anything that's in this contract. So, I will not be putting up a deferral today because if you go in and you try to change the specifications that were bid on, then we're not going to have a contract for these materials effective July 1st. It would have to start all over again, and that would cause a problem. So, what my feelings are is that anything that is wrong, we have to fix in the future. And we cannot, but we cannot take the chance of not having a contract in place for July 1st on 2025. And I know it's a two-year deal, but we can't take that chance. Thank you.
Councilman Lahat?
Ms. Vallow, I know, Ryan, you've met with Ms. Vallow many times, and I've seen the PowerPoint things you've done here when I was president and the things that you've sent to us. The email this week, I actually went in my spam folder, but all the things you've sent earlier. I've been speaking with Ms. Vallow, and George and I do speak about this a lot, and I know we've been, a lot of communications are back and forth. But I know Ms. Vallow has told me that things that you've met with her on, there have some things we have incorporated into the changes you want made on this spec sheet. She has a response that she's going to elicit now and put out and kind of maybe address some things that she has taken from the meetings with you, which have been great. So, I'm going to leave it to Ms. Vallow unless we have Ms. Nugent at the podium, but I'd appreciate it if you could, Ms., from the administration side.
Absolutely. As you know, that each department is typically tasked with preparing spec sheets for everything that they do in order for you guys to approve it. Here, you have your specs here. They are reasonable in their amount. I'm going to ask that you approve that. But however, I have met with Mr. Nugent on countless occasions, along with several members of our Public Works Department staff, including but not limited to our electrician, who is the one who makes those determinations as to what specs are going to be used, what the unit numbers are going to be as well. So, we have taken into consideration all of the suggestions that Ryan, Mr. Nugent, has made, and we will consider to review. As I brought his PowerPoint and his volumes of things, he has done an excellent job as it relates to researching this. And as we move further down the road, we'll certainly incorporate some more of his suggestions into our bid specs. However, this is incredibly important. I know that each of you always receive lighting issues, lighting complaints regarding your streetlights. This is vital to making sure that we can provide the citizens with the appropriate equipment and materials that they need so that we can keep the lights on in the City of Kenner.
I know we pay a great deal to energy to keep those lights on. And we have to stay on energy to make sure that these lights still, because right now, I know, on Williams and I-10, there's a bank of lights out there. There must be 50 lights that are out. I've got four or five poles that are missing that have been taken out by vehicle accidents. They also have to be replaced. A lot of things have to be done. We have to consider, the LED lights are less expensive than the high-pressure sodium lights, but they're also way more expensive to replace. And the cost measure of it is astronomical, five, six, seven years before you can even make up the difference. So, sometimes it hurts, but we have to take the licks.
And as it relates to I-10, that's a separate contract, and part of the issue with those posts is, they have a portion of it, I'm drawing a blank as to what it's called right now. It's a, it's a post, the post that when you hit the pole, it disintegrates and the pole remains. Right now, we have all of those on back order. So, we're working on I-10 as well.
I believe, Ms. Nugent? Am I right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Karen Nugent, 5444 Erlanger Road. I guess I am very concerned as a citizen that two years from now, we're going to be in the same place. Two years was ample time to get this right. And Ryan was very diplomatic in that he didn't point out that there are things in that bid packet that are actually wrong. They're incorrect. Kenner will continue to be a hodgepodge and a mismatch of different types of lighting. Lighting that is glaring to the citizens, to drivers. It's just, it's just really kind of a mess. There was some attention obviously given to Ryan's work. I know one fixture in particular that Ryan pointed out that the amount that we were paying for that was excessive. And apparently, that was looked into. I think what's in there now is less than half of what the original cost was. And so, keep in mind that during all this time, he also looked at cost. Cost was an important factor for him. He understands the constraints that governments operate under. So, that was, that was an important consideration. It's very, very disturbing to me, I've been at this podium before, that you have a citizen who is interested, you have a citizen who wants to speak out. And doesn't mean you have to agree with everything that they say. But, in terms of using the expertise of someone who has that expertise to your advantage, is failing to use it, I think, is being pound-wise and penny foolish. I understand not all electricians are. I understand not all electricians are focused on appearance, they're just focused on getting the light on, but we have to start paying attention to this issue that has been all over the country, and other more progressive areas are recognizing that lighting and light pollution is a big issue. And so I do think that it's a shame, I don't mean to be pessimistic, but I wouldn't at all be surprised if next year, we're in the same boat. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Vallow, and I haven't seen Mr. Nugent's documents or anything along those lines. I understand the issue of, if I recall from when Mr. Nugent spoke at one of the meetings, I think he had asked somebody, I don't know if it was the Supply House or something along those lines, if anybody remembers this, help me with this, please, but I think he was given a price on what they said the fixtures should cost. Does anybody recall that?
Again, you're dealing with a bid, so what happens, and Liz, please correct me if I'm wrong, but you are given bid specs, there are unit prices. So let's say we have, you're going to give me a price for six poles and mast arms. They're going to price based on that, they're going to give you one unit price, and that's, that is solely up to the discretion of the individual who's doing the bidding. So when you do that, you have to tabulate those entire things. So there may be some options, some items within the bid specs that may be higher, much like what he had objected to. I don't know what the price was, it was 3,000 or 1,500. Do you remember, George?
Yeah, it was the, it was the Chateau Estate fixture, and I think we were paying like 3,000 or 3,100. And in the meetings with Mr. Nugent, it came out that it should be between 16 and maybe 1,800, 1,700. Well, in this bid packet, it's at 1,650, which makes me happy. We also had a situation where if you bypass the ballast and you put an LED up there, if you get, if you, there's 179 fixtures in Chateau Estates, I went and counted them. And basically, my eyes lit up because it would, if you go and you bypass the ballast and you put this new fixture in, the great thing is, it should have cost about $300. So you've got 179 of them, and I was thinking, just go replace all of them. But then in the meeting with Amy, Ryan, Christine Callenberry, Perry, the electrician, we went and we had one bulb to try that scenario. Well, they go out and they did the fixture where Chateau Mouton and Rothschild hit, you turn off Chateau Boulevard, lights up, it looks beautiful. The problem is that those poles are 50 years old. They had to rewire the pole, okay? So then the can of worms gets open, okay, we're going to try this, but if we have to rewire every pole, it's not going to cost $300. And then, and what happened, since these poles, these wires are so old, they just crumble in the electrician's hand. So that's why I went away from doing that, because I didn't want to have problems all through the Chateau Estates area where lights are off because we're trying to change it, and it just didn't make sense to me to do that. So that's why I changed that, and as they break, we are fixing them. But the $3,000 price is now 1,650, I'm happy with that, but it's a situation where you have to follow the bid laws on this stuff, and I think we fixed that one, and I thank you for bringing that to our attention, Ryan. I appreciate that.
So, and let me just further elaborate on the public bid law. Again, you're doing unit prices for a quantity. So in some instances, bidders, if they're savvy, they will, they will see what we need the most, and that price may be higher. And the thing that we need the less, that's a lower price, so then you still have a balanced bid. Unfortunately, or unfortunately, whatever you may say, this is what transparency is about, is that if they give you a unit price, we're obligated, if the whole bid, the bid tabulation is within the numbers that we, the lowest bid tabulation, we have to accept that, or we reject the entire thing and we start all over again. So I just want to be clear that in that instance, they hedged their bets, they raised the price on that one piece, on that one unit. That's how that works. So it's, it has a lot to do with bidding as well, and who is doing the bidding.
Councilman Lahat?
How many bidders do we have?
Liz?
We only have one bidder.
So New Light was it?
What's that?
So New Light was it, okay.
Everything else was non-responsive.
So we had no response, anybody else to the specimen, okay.
And they had four no responses, one and four no responses on this.
Councilman McKinney?
And just to further elaborate, I've been in discussions with some of our other electrical contractors to kind of discuss, should we do labor and material, or just materials, or should we bid per job, which that would absolutely delay the work that needs to be done, but I'm also looking at other options as they relate to acquiring materials.
Councilman McKinney?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Council Clerk. My question is regarding, so the total bid for New Light, which was the only bidder, was 830K, or 830, right? So, and, but the legislation says not to exceed 300,000. So this total bid is for everything that was requested, and I guess this is a question for Liz, is for everything that was requested, you know, we're never going to need, or hopefully, we'll never need $800,000 worth of lights every year or on a bi, you know, biannual basis. So I just wanted to clarify that this is only, so this contract will only use at an, as an as-needed basis when we're replacing lights, correct?
Correct, yeah. It was over like 600 lines worth of items, I think, you know, and so that's everything that we could possibly need, but we're not going to buy, you know, one of everything. I think it was 681 items, so, correct. So we think that we're going to spend around the 300,000, which is all we're requesting.
And how much have we spent in the past?
I think it's about 117,000.
117, so in the past, it was 117. Okay. My other, my last question is with regard to like what Ms. Vallow said, so are there, are there particular types of lighting that we have ordered? I mean, New Light has, we've, how long has our relationship been with New Light? Because I mean, I think last time, they were the only bidder as well. So they, they haven't, probably have an advantage or an idea of what we need and what we replace, so, right? So they have the advantage of knowing what we need more on a regular basis, right?
Correct.
So, okay, okay. I just want to fully understand that and also clarify, is there any way that we can balance that out since they have that managed and they may be overcharging, like, is there any way for us to?
Well, everything's a public record, so anybody that wants to bid on things, it happens all the time where they put in a public record to see the current contract or current expenses that have been on that contract. So anybody can have the same advantage that this vendor has. It's all public knowledge.
But in this instance, how long have they actually been a contractor?
I mean, they've been with us for a while.
For a while, yeah. And no one else has bid?
Not on this one.
On this one, okay. So they're, okay, I just want to understand if there would be any, what advantage it would be to defer this.
So the only concern is I don't think we have the time, this contract expires on June 30th. In order to rework the bid specs, you're looking at at least two weeks, and then to advertise again, we're not going to make a council meeting for y'all to approve, so I definitely, you know, would advise against that. I know that they did rework the specs with my department, and, you know, they did change some things, but, you know, our department that puts this out felt like it was a good bid, so, and we did get a response. We can't control who bids. Some bids, we have a lot, and some we don't. It's just kind of the game.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Brannigan to close?
Liz, the 117,000, is that this year or is it two years? It's a two-year contract.
Yeah, it's been with the two years, 117. So that's what we've spent, yeah.
60 grand a year.
Yeah, it depends. We could have had a large purchase the second year, but, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 13,805, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Ottwell Services LLC to provide emergency equipment rental in accordance with seal, sealed bid number 25-6886, and an amount not to exceed 175,875 annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All council members in favor, please say aye. Ryan, pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15H is summary ordinance number 13,806, an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with BSN Sports LLC to supply shirts, hats, visors, and screen printing in accordance with sealed bid 24-6823, increasing the agreement amount to a not-to-exceed amount of $45,000 annually for the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to say that the new jerseys this year for baseball teams are really nice, they're not T-shirts anymore, they're two button-down shirts, and they are a little bit more expensive, but I'm going to tell you, they look really nice. We're getting, for the first time, I think, ever, the coaches now are actually going to get team jerseys as well, so they all look the same. The hats are a little bit different, I wish it would have stayed with the logo, Kenner's on it, but it's still good, and I'd like my colleagues to vote for this.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yeah, we can just have a little bit more explanation on it. It's BSN Sports to supply shirts, hats, visors, screen printing, so forth, and that's for Kenner Rec, but is it, what sports, and is it jerseys? Are these, these kept by the city, maintained by the city?
No, the participants keep the jerseys. We're, we've been doing that for the last, at least, three years that I've been here. Like Councilman Schwartz said, we've upgraded the quality of the jersey that they're getting. On top of that, we've added more programming over the last year, so we now have teen programs offering four or five different sports throughout the year, special needs programs, which the city hasn't had in the past. So there's, we may not have seen a large jump in participants on the youth sports, but we're seeing other programming that we're offering now that we're going to have an additional need to buy some things for.
Could you give an example of some of those, please?
In the teen programs, for example, we've offered co-ed indoor volleyball, we're going to have a beach volleyball component coming up, we've had cabbage ball, flag football, and three-on-three basketball. In the special needs, which is primarily going to happen at Lincoln Manor Gym on a regular basis, that's a lot of people who are disabled, wheelchair activities. We've done some upgrades at our skate park, for example, that'll be outdoor activities for some of those folks. We've even hosted some regional events, wheelchair events out there. So again, it's not necessarily, we're not upping this because we're seeing a dramatic change in the number on the youth side, but we are seeing a change because we're adding new programming that we haven't had in the past.
And this encourages, I presume, participation, correct?
I would like to think so. I mean, if any of you go out to Musburgerlino on a Monday through Thursday right now, everything is there, T-ball, baseball, softball, all ages, every field's being used, it's the best lighting in the city, it's what you guys would remember growing up here of, that's what the park should look like. Now, no, we don't have that times eight facilities, but at least at that facility, we have what you would recall, you know, from days of coaching, for example. It's a lot of activity, starting next week with games, we'll have a concession stand back open, that hasn't happened in years. So we are making progress, even though there's just not a lot of, a lot of kids participating in regard to, trying to compare it to the 1980s, 90s, there's just not that volume of kids anymore.
And I see this legislation is submitted by you, so thank you for that, and you're staying behind it, so I think that's important, so thank you.
Councilman McKinney?
Thank you, Council Clerk. I guess I just have one question, and looking at the backup documentation, I noticed it's an amendment, and I see that the bid was rejected from the lowest bidder, and I just want to explain that a little.
I'm not recalling who the lowest was, I thought BSN was the lowest.
I think it was, it said Vilegent Ventures?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yep.
They could not, they thought we were going to order the entire amount of the initial agreement all at one time and not spread out throughout the year, so they would not honor it.
Okay, so they weren't honoring it, so BS, BSN will honor the very?
Yes, we're ordering basically as each season, fall, winter, and spring season comes up, because we don't really know numbers.
Right, okay. Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Brannigan?
Charles, I want to thank you for getting Bertolino back in play. The fields look incredible, everything that's been done out there, it looks like a brand-new facility. I know we had some issues with fields in the past, everything's worked out. Dudley Miguez is the one that oversees the grounds out there, and he did a great job putting it back together, and it looks great, and I can't wait to be out there and see it with a bunch of kids on the fields again.
Councilman Dunn?
Yeah, and Charles, thank you for the special needs in Lincoln Manor, because that was a big deal, we, you know, we did the grand opening for that. I think even Viviana volunteered to go out there with the indoor pickleball, I think it was, or something like that, so that's working out so far, pretty good for us.
Look, we had, we brought in an employee part-time in that capacity to establish special needs programs as well as programs for teens, and that evolved enough where that funded full-time position, he started part-time because we really weren't sure what we were going to see out of it, but he built that, both avenues going pretty well that justified moving him to full-time. So he's actively pursuing that, pursuing grant opportunities, not only for the, for just special needs, but for the department as a whole. So you're going to see some improvements across the board by having someone like Bruce in with us.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,807, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Atticappa Services LLC to provide sanitary sewer evaluation services on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid 25-6884, and an amount not to exceed $300,000 annually for the Department of Wastewater. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan.
Ms. Joanne? Can you kind of, what are some of these services that we're receiving?
Okay, so the sanitary sewer evaluation services, so this company would do pipe inspections and pipe assessment, so they would provide sewer line televising, smoke testing in areas, flow monitoring to determine if there's, you know, inflow and infiltration. They also provide emergency vacuum service, emergency televising if we need it. So we've used this type of contract after hurricanes to vacuum out the wet wells, we can also use it if we need the plant tanks cleaned, so we've utilized this contract.
We still only have one working camera for the city?
Yes.
And this'll double, add more to it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this company, that's the lowest bid, have we used them before?
They had the contract one time before, yes, sir.
Okay, you familiar with them?
Yes.
Okay, and they perform to satisfactory standards, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15J is summary ordinance number 13,808, an ordinance approving an agreement with Volunteers of America Southeast Louisiana for the Repair on Wheels Program, and an amount not to exceed $95,000 for the Department of Community Development. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15K is summary ordinance number 13- Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and nine. An ordinance approving the use of State Contract Number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-six-zero-two-zero to purchase Kubota tractors and equipment and an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars for the General Services Department or any other department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wellmott, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen L is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ten. An ordinance approving a sub-recipient agreement with the City of Kenner and the Parish of Jefferson to provide funding for Arthur P. Clay Resource Center Reconstruction Project and an amount not to exceed one million dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
This under Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Do your wonderful thing there and explain this to us.
This is another building that was impacted by Hurricane Ida. I presented to you about our agreement to get Section 108 funds from HUD as a low-interest loan, so we also pursue grant funding, so this is a grant for a million dollars. This building is estimated to be about four-point-four million dollars, so this is just gonna be grant funds that added to that allocation for the building to be built.
Okay. So again, these are lower income that would be able to provide or apply for it?
This is gonna be a partnership with Inclusive Care. They provide health care to those who insured and uninsured, so they're federally, federally qualified health care facility. So they provide health care to anyone who comes in and qualifies for the benefit, but they do take people who have insurance also.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Shaw. I'm, I'm just hoping that we be able to get this up and off the ground at least in a couple months. I know that's pushing it or whatever, but...
Yeah, we, we have to, because this funding from the state, just like the Lake Town project, we have to be finished by November twenty-seven.
Of this year?
November, uh, twenty-twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay.
November twenty-twenty-seven is the deadline for this funding, as well as the funding for the Lake Town, so the next step is, Ms. Jones actually had a, because this goes to HUD headquarters, this is not at our local level. They are actually presenting this to the panel on next week, so with our Section 108 fund, so right now, we are still seeking about five hundred thousand dollars in additional funding for the project, but we are moving forward with what we have now to get an architect selected, so we're gonna be advertising a SOQ with the Purchasing Department in the coming days.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Any other questions?
Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance adopting the capital budget for the City of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Item six B is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Metal Studs LLC to supply sheetrock and related materials as needed in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one sixty-one and an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Salem Auto Nation LLC doing business as TTE Center to purchase one enclosed pull-behind trailer in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash three thousand seven and an amount not to exceed six thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the General Services Department. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Technology International Incorporated to furnish one H S R A dash sixty roller or equal for the Traffic Division in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one sixty-two and an amount not to exceed eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars for the General Services Department. Item sixteen E is an ordinance approving an agreement with Digicom Systems Incorporated for consulting and support services for software and hardware system upgrades and other projects on an as-needed basis and an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Information Technology and Telecommunications Department. Item sixteen F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Lawman's and Shooter Supply Incorporated to provide thirty Type II adjustable LED M R M R, three-point-two-five M O A red dot sights in accordance with electronic bid number twenty-four-five dash twenty-one sixty-six and an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen G is an ordinance approving amendment number two to the agreement with Momentum ECM LLC, increasing the agreement not-to-exceed amount to fifty thousand dollars annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance approving an Astro System Advanced Package and Nice Gold Package Combined Service Agreement with Motor Roller Solutions and an amount not to exceed sixty thousand seventy-one dollars and forty-three cents for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Gardener LLC for the construction of a raised garden planter at Vintage Drive in Powell Boulevard in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-five dash sixty-eight eighty-eight and an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand four hundred dollars. Item sixteen J is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of existing state contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-three-two-one-five-nine with Coca-Cola Bottling Company United Incorporated to purchase bottled water and sports drinks for the City of Kenner employees on an as-needed basis not to exceed ten thousand dollars annually for the Department of Emergency Management. Item sixteen K is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Twenty-One Construction LLC by the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, DOTD, and the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-five cents for the Kenner Discovery School Sidewalks, State Project Number H period zero-one-five-zero-eight-seven, Federal Aid Project Number H zero-one-five-zero-eight-seven for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen L is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Monopoly Rental Properties to supply mesh, roll, wire, rebar, metal keyway, and chairs on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-five dash sixty-eight ninety and an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. Item sixteen M is an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with T Baker Smith LLC dated February third, two thousand twenty-three for Kenner Discovery Sidewalk Project, State Project Number H period zero-one-five-zero-eight-seven, Federal Aid Project Number H zero-one-five-zero-eight-seven for professional services associates with design and construction contract administration for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen N is an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of the Fairbanks Morse Submersible Pump Number Two at Twenty-Fourth and Delaware Sewer Lift Station by Fluid Process and Pumps LLC in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the Wastewater Department. Item sixteen O is an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of the Simons Motor Number One at the Fort M G D Sewer Lift Station by Precision PSI in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents for the Department of Wastewater. Item sixteen P is an ordinance approving the health insurance policy and rates for health insurance coverage for the City of Kenner employees/retirees/dependents for this fiscal year, July first, two thousand twenty-five, through June thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Item sixteen Q is an ordinance ratifying the policy and rates for commercial property insurance for the City of Kenner for the policy year, June first, two thousand twenty-five, through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilman Lahat?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hall. I wanted to tell everybody about the Lake Town developments. The construction of the KPD substation is actually, I think, ahead of schedule at this point, authorized about three thousand dollars this week from council manic funds for installation of data, data-type telecommunications equipment. The police are very excited about it. We're very excited to have them out there, and I know we're gonna continue to think big with it, and my office will be behind you, Chief Connolly, for anything else you, you and the men and women of the department might need, so we're very excited. I see the sign out there that Mark Glorioso got done for you, so thanks for all the attention on it, you and Sarah, and we're looking forward to having a big, you know, party when it's, when we actually do get it open, open, so.
No, we thank you for including us, and we look forward to be out there. We thank the city for putting all the work into it, but I think it's gonna be a great addition to River Tan, uh, Lake Town, especially with everything that the city and you have coming out there, so thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Wellmott?
Thank you, ma'am clerk. I'd just like to go over a couple things and think are important. First off, I noticed in some of the headings, we've mentioned this once before, and I want to give kudos to the legal department for the way a lot of the, the supposed ordinances or proposed ordinances are mentioning the, the amounts. I noticed that some of them don't mention the amounts, and it kinda took me by surprise, but after seeing and going through the agenda quite thoroughly, as we do at our meetings, I see that those are involving like the federal match, health insurance, commercial property insurance. Those, I understand, yeah, you had difficulties in putting the amounts in the headers. Everything else had it, so thank you very much for doing that, and I see that it's, it's going in a, in a very positive direction, so it's transparent. So thank y'all very much for, for keeping an eye on that and tackling that properly. Also, the KPD, I want to say in, in the addition to your social media presence, which is very, very good, outstanding work that you do, in addition to that, I notice personally on the streets, we have units, it just seems they're a lot more apparent. I don't know if it's just me, but I'm glad to see that, and it's, we need that in Kenner, and it looks great, so kudos, thank you.
No, thank you. Again, that's a credit to the council, to the mayor, the administration for working together for our recruitment and retention program. You know, we're now reaping the benefits, so that, you know, it's a team effort by all of us, so thank you.
Also, Chief, you might have, how did your meeting at the Capitol go about the temporary license plates?
Yeah, so Representative Ilg and our delegation are carrying a bill to try to curtail some of the illegalities that are going on with temporary license plates, so there's a fix in place, it's gonna be a, it's, it's, you know, a tough haul, it's a good start, you know, like I testified in front of the committee, at least we're not kicking a can down the road anymore. There's a lot of work that has to be done with the OMV operating system that the newly anointed secretary, Bryan Adams, is having to deal with, it's gonna be about a hundred million dollar system, but this is the perfect time for Representative Ilg to submit such a piece of legislation. It's gonna increase the fines and costs of anybody that violates the statute involving the temporary tags, which in the past, it's been kinda lenient, it's cheaper for them just to pay the fines and keep going instead of legally registering their vehicle. As I testified to, you know, as we make these stops on the street with these false plates, it's always an unlicensed, uninsured motorist that's involved, and we handle probably five or six of those a day that we take off the streets, so, you know, we're not giving up. We appreciate the legislature for backing us, and, you know, hopefully one day it'll be a thing of the past. We'd like to go more like Texas, where they just totally did away with paper plates all in all, went right to metal plates, to more or less where the, the plate was the signed vehicle instead of the registered owner, but this is a good step in that direction, and I applaud the legislature for, it's through the House now, it's still gotta go to the Senate.
Mrs. Chairman, the chief's being a little modest here. He's always in Baton Rouge, and he's always trying to get money for the city. I can't, the millions of dollars that he's been able to gather from the state through our legislatures and everything else like that, it's fantastic, chief, you're doing a fantastic job, and I, I mean, anybody else couldn't say anything more about what, what you're doing.
Thank you, thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Item eighteen is new business, we have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business, and our motions to reconsider are removed from a tabled position, we have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Nugent?
Sir, you have the podium.
Thank you, Councilman Schwart. I will try my best to be brief. Brian Nugent, fifty-four forty-four Erlanger Road, District Three. You'd be happy to know that only a couple of these items have to do with the lighting situation. I do want to start by thanking Chief Connolly for his testimony at the Capitol. I saw that yesterday, and, and it's something that I think we're all very happy to see. Concerning the lighting situation in particular, I did want to clarify a few points that were made or issue a couple corrections, just, first off, Amy Vallow, who has, you know, graciously met with me, as she mentioned on several occasions, we have actually met a, she mentioned, I don't know exactly how it was phrased, but we've actually met a grand total of four times over the course of the last two years, one of those being the meeting that we had with Christine Calamari, the city's chief electrician, Perry, and Councilman Branigan back in December. And on the matter of Chateau in particular, one piece of information that was conveniently omitted from that meeting, now, I will also say that I always thought that the kind of as-needed approach was probably gonna be what we needed to do from a fiscal perspective, but when we were looking at the possibility of doing these things en masse, one thing that was kind of, like I said, not mentioned is from our observations, it looks like about fifty percent of the fixtures in Chateau have already been retrofitted, meaning that we're not likely to encounter those wiring issues on at least fifty percent of those fixtures, so I thought that was worth mentioning. Finally, the, you know, the, the main nature of my frustration, you know, with being in the situation where we are today, is that, you know, I, back at that meeting in December, I actually alerted certain city officials to the fact that this contract was gonna be going out for solicitation in the very near future, and then made, invested a lot of time in actually doing everything I could to revise that packet myself, and I was actually never able to deliver those results and all the work that I did to the city. So that's it for the lighting stuff. Last couple things I did want to ask about, and this might be a question for Jose Gonzalez concerning the, the new interchange here at I-ten in Williams. On I-ten southbound approaching the new interchange, it's basically, you need to be in the left lane if you're going left, if you're turning left on veterans, you need to be in the right lane if you're going straight or turning right. There's no signage to indicate that at present, so it's very confusing, and it's leading to some dangerous merging and whatnot. I'm assuming that there will be some signage coming, but I just was hoping to get some verification on that. And the last thing, and this is a little bit out of Lesfield, but I, I do want to give out just a little brief PSA, mental health PSA. I did lose a friend recently, and, you know, we always think about these things when it's too late, but if anybody knows somebody that is struggling and you're sitting there debating between, you know, am I bugging this person, or should I ask them how they're doing? Go with the latter, because sometimes you don't get a second chance. That's all. Thank you. And Jose, I'm not sure if you have any information about that interchange?
The, the I-ten Loyal Interchange is not quite finished?
Oh, Williams, Williams, sorry.
All right, okay, now, now we're talking, okay. Well, that project is not quite complete either, you know, it's probably gonna be completed within a month or so, which you're probably gonna see next week, sometime next week, maybe late next week, is that they're gonna start transferring the traffic signals that are hanging on wires to the new mast arms. That's gonna activate those traffic signals, okay? That's gonna be late next week. Once that happens, they're gonna remove all the traffic signals that are hanging from wires, and soon after that, they will be opening the much-needed extra lane for westbound vets to northbound Williams, so we're getting closer and closer, okay? Next week, they're gonna be activating the new traffic signals on mast arms, removing the wires, removing some of the old poles, and hopefully, within a week or two, they will open that lane, but that project is not quite complete, it's probably gonna be completed within a month or a month and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Mr. Gregg?
Sir, the podium's yours.
Greg Tep, Fifth District. The only thing I wanna just kind of ask the council to do is when you go over the budget Monday, because I'm not gonna be able to attend the meeting, I wished I could, but what I'm concerned about is in the budget, if y'all would, consider giving the firemen a four percent increase instead of the state requirement of two percent, because they do an awful lot, and we need them in the city. We already seen what happened at CRC. I mean, things happen, and we need to make sure our first responders, one, are happy with their jobs, and, two, we are able to retain, because retention is so important, because that experience is invaluable, whether it's a fireman, a policeman, experience is just valuable, period, and that's hard to replace with a new recruit. So that's the only comments I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. Mr. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Councilman Branigan would like to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to respond. As y'all know, Millage went in place, New Play Plan went in...
As y'all know, millage went in place, new play plan went in, uh, place this past January, one of average firefighter raises were three percent to forty, depending on the years of service, so they got a lot of raises. Their play plan's in place now, uh, they get new fire trucks, new firehouses, uh, you can comb through the budget all you want, the budget's there. Uh, I would-I would like to have a conversation with Mr.-Mr. Teff at-at a council meeting he can come to, and we go over the budget and find out about who does he want to cut to give somebody else a rate, a four percent raise to a fireman. So, that's kind of, they're already now some of the highest, the fire, there's a fireman is the highest-highest paid, uh, person in city government is a fireman, so, and some of the lowest, or the lowest paid, you know, the ones that do the manual labor all day and every day, so, uh, there you go, it's from three percent to forty-plus percent.
Not-not include that, the stations, gear, trucks, they've gotten all of that as well, and it's just a matter of, we're just working on it, at-right now, in progress. Councilman Branigan?
And on that, the city is still put out of the general fund, one point nine million or one point six million is still coming from the city, so. And, Mr. Nugent, on the fixtures, um, there's a hundred and seventy-nine lights in Chateau, fifty are changed, that leaves a hundred and twenty-nine. I made the decision that we're gonna change them as they need to be changed.
I think everybody saw on Facebook here, we had a major fire over at the CRC, where ten transport vehicles, uh, burned. I want to thank the firemen out there for an outstanding job they did at keeping it contained to the vehicles themselves. A lot of people just don't realize actually what happened and what took place at that point. Everybody saw the pictures of all the vehicles burnt. That's strange, but what people don't realize, each one of those trucks had at least twenty-five or seventy-five gallons of fuel in those vehicles. Once the tanks were breached, seventy-five gallons of diesel was spread on the ground, and that's for ten trucks. So, we figured at least seven hundred and fifty gallons of diesel was out there. Take the time that it came in, call came in roughly at four-thirty in the morning, the fire was definitely progressed by the time it was noticed, by the time the trucks got out there, but fortunately, no one was hurt, vehicles can be replaced. And for the men and women of Kenner Fire Department, you did a fantastic job that night. I can just imagine the chaos that was out there with the fuel, uh, the equipment, getting the foam out there and putting that fire out. It was probably, uh, a sight to see at five o'clock in the morning, but thank y'all for doing an excellent job. Motion to adjourn?